I thought all this time I thought it was like a... I keep forgetting. That's pretty funny. That's hilarious. The Tuesday, June 18th, 2019 meeting of the Eden Prairie City Council is now called to order. Please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I think I kind of spooked my council colleagues with the gavel there. I'll go a little lighter when I close the meeting. Just an open podium invitation announcement. Open podium is an opportunity for Eden Prairie residents to address the city council on issues related to Eden Prairie city government before each council meeting. Typically, the first and third Tuesday of each month, the open podium times are from 6:30 to 6:55 in the council chamber right here. If you wish to speak at open podium, please contact the city manager's office at 952-949-8412, and you can get that number online. By noon of the meeting date with your name, phone number, and subject matter, it helps us to be more prepared for you coming. If time permits, after scheduled speakers are finished, the mayor will open the floor to unscheduled speakers. Open podium is not recorded or televised. If you have questions about open podium, please contact the city manager's office. Tonight is not abnormal, really, in terms of awards and presentations and proclamations, but this one is particularly enhanced, as you can tell by all the numbers of people in the room. It's an exciting night, and for me personally as well. The first proclamation is dedicating the community center Aquatics Center in the name of our former mayor Nancy Tyrell-Lukens. Earlier today at 4 o'clock, the council and staff and Nancy's family met at the community center, and we dedicated the new aquatics wing of our community center. It's now called the Nancy Tyrell-Lukens Aquatics Center, so we're pretty excited. I'd like to read the proclamation and then have our... I was going to say former mayor, and she is the former mayor, but once you're a mayor, you're always a mayor. So she is Mayor Nancy Tyrell-Lukens, and she'll come forward momentarily. I guess Nancy, I could have you stand there as I read this, but I think that's awkward. Whereas Nancy Tyrell-Lukens served the city council... served the city of Eden Prairie as council member from 1994 through 2001, and as mayor from 2002 through 2006, and 2010 through 2018. If you add all those years up, it's about 20. Whereas Nancy Tyrell-Lukens served as Eden Prairie's mayor for 13 years, which makes her the longest-serving mayor in the city's history. And whereas Nancy Tyrell-Lukens' passion for health and wellness, and her unwavering belief in the importance of enriching the lives of all Eden Prairie residents, was consistently demonstrated in her support and enthusiasm for parks, programs, and recreation facilities. And whereas Nancy Tyrell-Lukens' legacy is woven into the fabric of our community in a multitude of ways and will benefit many generations to come. And whereas Nancy Tyrell-Lukens was mayor of Eden Prairie during the planning, construction, and opening of the Aquatics Center. Now therefore be it resolved that Nancy Tyrell-Lukens is recognized for her outstanding leadership and vision as a council member and mayor, which have contributed to Eden Prairie's reputation for outstanding levels of service and achievement that serve as a benchmark other communities strive for. And further in her honor, the Eden Prairie City Council does hereby dedicate the Nancy Tyrell-Lukens Aquatics Center in the city of Eden Prairie, adopted by the Eden Prairie City Council, this 18th day of June 2019, Ronald A. Case Mayor. Nancy, if you'll come forward.
I'm not very long-winded, so this will be very short. First of all, thank you very much for putting me first on the agenda. I happen to have this conflict with a book club meeting at my house tonight at 7:00. And I just noticed that there are some of my book club members out there in the audience, so thank you so much for coming. That means that there are two or three of them that aren't showing up early. We normally meet at 7:00, and it's 7:30 tonight, so thank you. Yeah, it was a wonderful event at the community center this afternoon, and I just so appreciate the council's interest in doing this. It means so much to me. It just, for a lot of personal reasons, the tie with the Aquatics Center was a really good thought. Thank you again to city staff. I'm sure you guys all had a part in making this happen too, and you all were so critical to helping me succeed as a mayor. Also, thank you to the residents of Eden Prairie who continued to elect me as their mayor and giving me the wonderful opportunity that I had to lead this city. I really appreciate it, and I will remember this forever. Thank you.
Thank you, Nancy. Go to your book club and enjoy. You've earned it. The next award is something that's really personally significant to me, and so, Rick, do you want to say anything in advance of that? Or just Steve Olson, would you like to come up? It's the Heritage Preservation Award. I've been saying history person of the year. That's probably not accurate, but it sounds good.
Good evening, Mayor, council members, staff. My name is Steve Olson, and I have the good fortune to chair the Heritage Preservation Commission. Once again, I have the privilege of offering a few remarks and providing some background on this year's Heritage Preservation Award recipient. This is the fifth Eden Prairie Heritage Preservation Award. The award recognizes an individual, a family, or a business who has made an outstanding contribution to Eden Prairie's historic resources. Catherine is an old name. Sources say the name has Greek roots and dates back as far as the 3rd century AD. Catherine means pure. Catherine means clear. Kathy Case grew up in Bloomington, Minnesota. Both sets of her grandparents lived nearby as she grew up. They taught her the importance of family, the value of strong relationships, and a love of history. Her childhood also gave her an appreciation for place. Time would pass. She would move to Eden Prairie. She would marry a schoolteacher. They would buy a house that was built in 1874. They would remodel the house. They would raise four kids. Today, there are also four grandchildren. Shortly after moving to Eden Prairie, Kathy would get deeply involved in the Eden Prairie Historical Society. She has been president of the society for 25 years. Her historic preservation fingerprints are everywhere in Eden Prairie. She has donated hundreds of hours to the museum downstairs. She was a key person that made the historic photos in the atrium of this building a reality. Historic interpretive panels all around the city have her fingerprints, too. She has worked relentlessly on the Cummins House. Some have said that she sees her role as being a caretaker of Eden Prairie's heritage. That seems far too modest and passive from my perspective. She is an advocate, a resource, a champion for Eden Prairie's history. I shudder to think if she had not stepped forward for all these years. For years, our Heritage Preservation Commission meetings have been held down the hall. It's been common that at some point during a meeting, we'll need some information on some topic, and often Lori Kramer will simply say, "I'll give Kathy a call." The HPC knows Kathy to be a trusted advisor and resource. I've seen Kathy eager to learn the stories uncovered by the artifacts the archaeologists dug up on the Flying Cloud Project. I've watched her light up while telling the stories of the Consolidated School. Tonight, we recognize a woman who has made an outstanding contribution to Eden Prairie's history. Our gift to her pales in comparison to her gift to us. Nonetheless, she should understand that our appreciation is genuine. Kathy was most appropriately named. Her passion for keeping Eden Prairie's history preserved is pure. It is clear. The recipient of the 2019 Eden Prairie Heritage Preservation Award is Kathy Case.
I just want to say thank you to the city of Eden Prairie. I wouldn't have been able to do all the things that we've done over the last, you know, 30 years without the city's help. And my boards, I mean, all of the people that I've served with on the Historical Society have been amazing. And I look out there, and I see Jim Clark and Arlene Marshall and people from the past, and it's just been an amazing group of people, and it still continues to be. And they really... I couldn't do anything without them, so I'm very grateful. Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right. We in Eden Prairie have some amazing opportunities to be involved in our city, and one of them is the Citizens Academy. And we're going to... You can clap in a moment. We're going to graduate them tonight, which is really an exciting time. So let's see. Rick, do you want to take it from here and give any directions that we need?
Yes, Mayor and Council. I've got a little bit of an introduction, then I'll ask the council members to come down to present the diploma and a pin to our graduates. But as you said, Mayor, we have a way to engage our residents, to engage in the community for this is only the second year we've done a city government academy. So we had 23 individuals, Eden Prairie residents, who were able to spend almost 20 hours over six different Wednesday evenings to kind of take a deep dive into the city of Eden Prairie, department by department. These are folks that spent an entire evening involved in police, or fire, or parks and recreation, or community development, administration, and city council as well. So now we're going to be considering them alumni of our government academy, and they will be able to graduate and be a part of the community. I think I said on opening night that you actually have to earn your diploma, and I think you've all done that. I want to say I have a couple of quick thank yous before I come down and read the names. Two thank yous. One is to Southwest Transit. Southwest Transit, at least for two or three of the evenings, donated their bus and allowed our graduates to see the city from a community development, economic development, park and recreation standpoint, and to shuttle between the maintenance facility and the water treatment plant. So thank you for Southwest Transit. And then another city staff member who was there each and every evening, that's Katie O'Connor in our office. Katie, you're really the person who helped plan this, and were a big part of the... putting the event together, so that's an awesome contribution that you made. Many of our departments, you got to meet, the graduates got to meet, many of our city employees throughout the week. So I'm going to come down, and I'm going to read the names in alphabetical order, and if you'd all come up, you can accept your diploma, and I'll be right down. Yes, we've got a little slideshow playing in the background as well, so people can see that as they're coming up. So I'm going to start with our first graduate of the 2019 City Government Academy is Michael Boyd. Michael, come on up. Oh, good. No, it's okay. No, you can sit back down. They're going to have a picture. They're going to have a picture and cake. They're having a picture and cake afterwards. Our next graduate is Dean Cowdery. Dean. No, but I... They've already run... They've already been part of a council meeting. They did. Yeah, they did run one. Next, we have Patricia Dunn. Our next graduate is Mustafa Ergun. You're welcome. Next graduate is Connie Houseworth. Our next graduate is Vamshi Johnalat... Boy, it's a tough one. Johnalatagata. Our next graduate is Irene Keegan. Our next graduate is Cheryl Kessler. To make sure, yeah, make sure it's signed. That's the real deal. Our next graduate is Sean Lewis. Our next graduate is Rose Tuitt Lewis. Our next graduate is Deborah Lind. Our next graduate is Michelle McGrath. Our next graduate is Jerry McKenzie. Our next graduate is Gary Rodekour. Oh, so I've got both Gary and Laura Rodekour, so I think they must not have been able to make it. We had, like I said, there's probably four or five people that can't make it, so we had about 23 graduates, but I know that Bruce Shop is here, or Shopey. Next, we have Jessica Troy. And I believe our last graduate that we have here tonight is Robert Zwiefelhofer. Thank you. So I think that's everybody, Mayor and council members, your graduating class of 2019.
You all get to leave, right, and go down to have a reception, but on behalf of the council, we just want to say that you are our ambassadors going out, so we just so appreciate the knowledge that you've gained and the help that you give us, because everyone, the staff, the people in Eden Prairie, and our ambassadors particularly, make our lives a lot easier. So thank you for all that you're doing and going to do. So welcome, and go down and enjoy cake, beverages. We were down there so long, my screensaver came back on, so I got to deal with that in a second. We've had, in Eden Prairie, the Miss Minnesota Pageant Contest since 2007, and never, for whatever reason, had the opportunity to really partner to celebrate in our city this great event and have the chamber involved, and this year, that's what we're doing. So we have been involved quite a bit. Well, at least, I don't know if they would say quite a bit, but I feel like we've volunteered quite a bit in order to be part of the initial opening ceremony at the mall on Saturday, and then I'll be part of... They're allowing me to be up on stage on the final night as well to give some awards out. So we're just really excited to have them here. Going to read a proclamation, and then we'll deliver it. And are people... Raise your hand if you're with the Miss Minnesota. So we don't have anyone here tonight, so I'm just reading it?
Yes. And then you've... There's an event coming up. I think you could probably... You could probably deliver it, but I...
Should I still...
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
That's good.
Okay.
It's a good thing.
All right. All right. Proclamation. City of Eden Prairie, Hennepin County, Minnesota. Whereas the city of Eden Prairie is proud to be home of the Miss Minnesota Pageant for the 12th consecutive year. And whereas the Miss Minnesota Scholarship Organization in affiliation with Miss America Scholarship Organization offers educational opportunities to outstanding young women through scholarship programs. And whereas the Miss Minnesota Pageant provides contestants the opportunity to realize their own personal development through their participation in the pageant. And whereas the women competing represent communities from across the state of Minnesota. And whereas this year, the 84th Miss Minnesota will be crowned. Now therefore, I, Ronald A. Case, Mayor of Eden Prairie, Minnesota, do hereby proclaim the week of June 16th to 22nd, 2019, as Miss Minnesota Week, and welcome all participants, their sponsors, families, friends, and visitors to the city of Eden Prairie. Signed, Ronald A. Case, the Mayor. So thank you for being part of this, part of our community this weekend. We look forward to future partnerships with you. All right. We now have a fun announcement. They're all fun. From the Tour de Tanca, Jenny Boderka... Did I get that close?
Yeah.
Welcome. Thanks for being here.
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members. Thanks for the opportunity to be here. My name is Jenny Boderka. I'm a coordinator with Minnetonka Community Education, and here to share a little bit with you about Tour de Tanca for 2019. The event will take place on August 3rd, always the first Saturday in August, and it'll be our 14th year, so we're excited to have lots of great options for riders in our community. You could bike a distance of 16 miles, 30 miles, 36 miles, 48, 57, 62, 71, or 100. And depending on the distance you choose, you'll start kind of in the Minnetonka area and then spread out as far as Delano, Norwood, Young America. We have many riders that come through Eden Prairie as well. We expect about 3,500 riders between the distances that we have to offer, and it's really a fun community event with a lot of happenings along the way. There's 13 rest stops where our riders can enjoy entertainment, great food, and we have bike mechanics should they need them. Riley Lake Park is one of our stops, which is always a big hit for our participants. And we certainly want to thank Eden Prairie Police and Fire who help us immensely, as well as the city, in securing our permits and securing the roads that are busy to help keep our participants safe. Over the years, we've had participants from 42 different states, and we keep the data on, you know, most participants by city as well in the metro, and Eden Prairie continues to be up at the top. Last year, they were number three with about 235 participants, and so we expect that to continue strong this year with participants. And also, we have a lot of volunteer opportunities, so it takes about 600 volunteers to make this event happen. So we certainly encourage, if you're not interested in bike riding on that day, to join us to help maybe direct traffic at a corner, help serve some food at a rest stop. We have lots of different options available. We also do support our local ICA food shelf through this event, and have donated over $68,000 to them to date with our participation. And so we thank you for your continued support. For those who'd like to get involved in volunteering or participating, visit turdetanka.org, and you'll learn more information there. But thanks for the opportunity, and I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
Counsel? PG, council member in array.
Jenny, a question for you. Who was number one city?
Ah, good question. It's Minnetonka. And they have been, I think, from the beginning. Yep. Right in our backyard.
Thank you.
Yep.
All right. Thank you, Jenny. Thanks for coming.
All right. Thank you so much. Have a good evening.
All right. That's the end of our fun presentation phase of the meeting. We're now moving into the fun rest of the meeting. Approval of agenda. Well, let me ask this before we actually move it. Any items that anyone would like to add, or anything that needs to be changed? I have three brief comments under council member reports. So with that, can I have a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. So approved. Minutes, if anything to question on either the workshop or the council meeting? Let's put them together in a motion, then.
Move to approve the council workshop, held Tuesday, May 21st, 2019, and the minutes of the city council meeting, held Tuesday, May 21st, 2019.
Is there a sec... There are several seconds there. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose. Passes. Thank you. Consent calendar. Any items initially that you would like to either withdraw, pull, just question in the moment, or just ask staff about? Okay. If not, is there a motion to approve the consent calendar items A to M?
I approve of item A to M on consent calendar.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose. Passes. Public hearings. Our first one's Castle Ridge. Mr. Getcho.
Yes, thank you, Mayor and council members. The first public hearing is a couple... The first public hearing is a couple things going on here. It's actually a PUD concept review on 19.57 acres. But we're also asking for more detailed approval on 1.33 acres. And that's one portion of the project that I'm going to mention in a minute. But overall, the applicants are proposing to redevelop the Broadmoor Apartments in the Castle Ridge Care Site, which, as I mentioned, is 19.57 acres in size, located at the northwest corner of Flying Cloud Drive and Prairie Center Drive. And the property is zoned a combination of community commercial and multifamily residential. Back in 2008, so this is a while ago, the city approved a master plan redevelopment that includes senior housing, all-aged housing, and commercial development. And then due to the many different factors, a variety of factors, the only thing that was redeveloped or developed at that point was that CVS store on Columbine Road. So as I said, that there was quite a bit of a mix proposed of senior housing, all-age housing, and commercial retail. The updated and newer development that's before you tonight is similar. It's, the details are different in terms of the amount of square foot and the amount of units. But it is, again, somewhat of a three-pronged proposal. And so this application is requesting approval of an updated master plan. And Presbyterian Homes is coordinating with two other development partners on the other two outlots, in addition to the senior housing piece. So there's, I know there's a pretty detailed presentation. I think all facets of the site are going to present to you what their proposals are for the site. And so you'll hear about pieces of those and you can, you will be able to have the opportunity that the public and the planning commission and the staff has done, and that's to weigh in on portions of the proposal, because the formal submittals have not occurred as it relates to the all-age housing and the commercial retail. But as I said earlier, the senior housing proposal, which you'll hear from Presbyterian Homes, is the one that wishes to move more immediately. So with that, I'm not sure who's kind of coming first. I see Mr. Fletcher out there. I believe he's going to begin a proposal. And then council and staff and the developers are here for questions. And then we have a public hearing that needs to be held as well.
Do you have the presentation as well? Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Councilmembers. My name is John Fletcher with Presbyterian Homes and Services. I'm actually with Senior Housing Partners, which is the real estate and development arm of Presbyterian Homes and Services. Address is 3116 Fairview Avenue North in Roseville. We are really excited to be here today, representing the redevelopment of a site that's been a long time coming. Started in, really in 2006. Actually, we purchased the property in pieces from 2001 to 2004. And this has been a vision of Presbyterian Homes for a long time. So about Presbyterian Homes and Services, we are... If it'll work. Got it. All right. We are a faith-based, not-for-profit organization based in Roseville, Minnesota. Our mission is to honor God by enriching the lives and touching the hearts of older adults. For us, long-term ownership is the key. We are not market-rate merchant developers. There's nothing wrong with that, but that's not our mission. Our mission is to, is to hold long-term and to serve our residents. We were founded in 1955. Since then, we've only sold one property. And that's the one that got away, and we talk about it every day. And we really want it back. Today, we have over 6,500 employees and nearing 7,000 employees. And we serve over 10,000 residents in our 8,000 apartment homes across 50 different communities throughout the Midwest and soon to be in the state of Washington. The proposed development is the redevelopment of the 19, almost 20 acres Castle Ridge Care Center site. And the proposal is to turn it into a master plan with three different, three different components. One being senior housing, one being all-age apartment housing, and one being a commercial development, which will have multiple subcomponents to it. Currently, the site is a, includes vacant land, an 82-unit Castle Ridge Care Center, which you might be familiar with, and the 240-unit Broadmoor Apartments, both of which are at the end of their life. If you've had the chance to go through those facilities, it's time to replace them. That's, that's the bottom line. This is just a perspective of the site, so you can understand the areas that's under consideration. As it was discussed early on, the CVS was built all the way on the, on the right-hand side of the slide. That's the furthest north piece of the site. Our proposed development would encompass all the area inside the red lines. Just so you can get an understanding of what we're proposing, the current site is the green bar along the top. Currently, we have, Castle Ridge Care Center has a mix of what we call care center units, which are the high-acuity residents, more healthcare, more services need. And we also have 22 assisted living. On the bottom of that, you can see along the continuum where we're proposing, that the image, the diagram, the infographic, that is the continuum of care that you see from senior housing providers. Starting with private homes, cottages, working through row-style homes, townhomes, senior apartments, independent living, assisted memory care, care center, transitional care, et cetera. So you can see where we're falling on the acuity scale, starting with senior apartments more traditionally called independent living. We'll have 148 apartment homes, 40 assisted living, and 18 memory care, along with 68 care center units, which will have 72 care center beds. So overall, the current has 82 senior apartments. It will be, have 274 by the time we're finished. Currently, Broadmoor Apartments has 240 units, and Broadmoor will be torn down. So overall, 322 existing, 274 upon completion. On the screen now, you can see a comparison from the 2008 to the 2018 plan. The 2008 plan, as was mentioned, was a beautiful plan, but could not be built for a variety of reasons. Not the least of which was the change in the market. But frankly, it was built without the wisdom and advice of certain project partners. And we might have just overshot our ability to get something done, frankly. And so that's been a key piece for us, is to bring in experts in these different market sectors as well. You can see a number of similarities. We do have our main spine road running right down the middle of the site. We've actually moved a key intersection, which is just south of Prairie Center Drive, further to the south to help with stacking and allow better circulation east-west through the site to Columbine Road. We've kept the senior housing portion to the, you could say, the least visible portion of the site, the southwest. And we've left the prime frontage along Prairie Center Drive and Flying Cloud Drive available for future development, which would be the all-age housing and the commercial. Just for basic, simple architectural massing, this is approximately how the senior housing building would sit on the site. So you can see setback on the southwest side towards Castlemore Drive and Columbine. So from an architectural standpoint, the project takes its design cues and influences from other recently approved apartment projects in Eden Prairie. The idea is to be a blend of classic and timeless, as well as modern. We use a variety of different type-one materials, including glass, brick, and stone, which creates a warm palette of a variety of colors. We also have a variety of roof elevations and architectural lighting features, such as the white column you can see on the picture, which is actually a lighted column or lighted spire. The next slide is just to show a variety of the different elevations. This doesn't have a pitched roof. We're trying to stay from, away from a big massing on the site. But we're also trying to show a variety of different elevations and architectural fenestration on the building. So you'll notice that we have different roof lines, different bumpouts on the side of the facade. You can also see we have a sawtooth design on the wings that are facing towards Purgatory Creek, because the idea is that we want to have, those are sunrooms. So you can have residents that are sitting in sunrooms, being able to look outside of the creek without having to go outside. We also have a rooftop terrace. Rooftop terrace has a variety of different unique features, including putting greens, pickleball courts, outdoor grilling stations, terraces, and all of that right off of an indoor pool as well. From a site plan standpoint for the senior parcel, the primary entrance is on the right-hand side of the slide, where you can see a drop-off with a portcachere covering it. That is for the main entrance for our bistro, for our independent living, as well as for guests into our chapel and a variety of other amenities. And then on the bottom, you can see another portcachere drop-off. That's for our care center. So a separate entry for our care center. On the left-hand side, which is towards Columbine Road and Purgatory Creek, that's where we have our loading access. And then also, there's the raised amenity terrace. And then we have one level of underground parking. The site is sloped, so a portion of the underground parking is covered on the front side. On the backside, it is exposed, but we have ivy vines growing up it. So we're doing some vertical green space. Just a quick run-through on the floor plans. You can see on the, on the underground parking, again, we have about a half a floor of underground parking. We do include a couple amenities in there, including our pet spa and then a wood shop for folks to get out and get active. On the main floor, we have a number of different amenities, including a large dining center, putting greens, pickleball courts, indoor pool, wellness center with a bunch of different spaces, a bistro. Kind of think of a Starbucks Lite with grab-and-go foods, sandwiches. We also have a community center and chapel. On the second floor, or sorry, the second through fifth floor is primarily residential. But we do have on the fifth floor, two additional terraces, including outdoor space for the memory care. So rooftop memory care, outdoor space for, or outdoor garden space for our memory care residents as well. We also have a sky lounge on the fifth floor, looking back towards downtown Minneapolis, which we think will be a really unique amenity for seniors. So in terms of project phasing, the project will be built, it is intended to be built continuously, but it does have to be built essentially one after another because of a building demo, building demo. So the plan in Phase 1 is to start with the demolition of the Broadmoor Apartments and the parking garages, and basically do site preparation work. We're going to start from south going north on Broadmoor Apartments. As soon as we start tearing down the apartment building, we'll start with footings and foundations for the senior apartments. As you work to the north, and this, this process will take a couple, just a couple months. It'll go pretty quick. As you work going north, we get into the Phase 2, the yellow portion. That is primarily where the apartment building will be built, the all-age apartments. As soon as that pad is ready to be turned over, then our apartment partner will start on their construction. So in terms of the start of the senior housing, followed by the all-age apartments, it should be within a few months. The plan is to go kind of bang-bang, one right after the other. Phase 3, as soon as we're finished with the construction of the, of the new senior apartments, we'll move and transition all the existing residents in Castlemore Care Center into the new senior apartments. We'll then tear down the existing Castle Ridge Care Center, and that's where the commercial development will then commence. From a sustainability and wellness initiative standpoint, if you reviewed the pack that we submitted, you'll see, you probably saw a couple, two, three pages of laundry list of sustainability and wellness features. Obviously, sustainability and health and wellness is very important to us for our residents. But just a few examples, we do exhaustive energy modeling to help us review a couple hundred different energy tactics, you could call them, for first cost, second cost, lifetime cost, and get a better understanding of what we can put into the project. We also take a look at what types of construction materials we can recycle. Just some specific examples, low-flow plumbing fixtures that are 31% more efficient, eight free electric car charging stations for our, for our residents, insulation in excess of code minimums, drought-tolerant plants, low VOC paints, things like that. From an affordability standpoint, we are committing to 5% of the units, which would be 14 of them, would be affordable at 30% of AMI. And just a quick recap, as we presented to the planning commission, they provided a number of really good comments and feedback. And we've consolidated them or grouped them into eight primary areas. In particular, we grouped them into areas including additional loading and delivery space, additional green space, questions regarding resident access to retail, community gardens, rooftop sustainability, increased building height. The request was to actually add more height to the building. Shared parking between all the different parcels, and activation of the first-floor exterior on the senior housing. And we reviewed this with the planning commission, and we obviously got great feedback with unanimous approval. But just to show, just a few items that we added. We added additional seating throughout the site. We added the ivy green wall, the vertical green space on the back of the terrace. We've added community gardens or community herb gardens, both in the independent living and in the memory care spaces. We added a second full-size truck delivery lane. We added another bypass. We're showing the bypass lane at both front entries to show that we can have a car that's there right now and allow a bypass to go through it. We're also adding the 15-minute parking, routing outdoor bistro dining. We're also adding outdoor handicap seating area, and then also outdoor yoga spaces as well on the eastern side of the site, with the intent being that we wanted to show additional activation on that first floor site as, or first floor of the site as it's facing the retail. And that showcase here on this image, you can see the orange spaces is where we have that indoor/outdoor activation space on the first floor. So with that, I did want to bring up that we had a couple of exceptions that we took with the staff report regarding the three-quarters intersection, as well as the outlet seat recommendation. I don't know if we wanted to address that now or have that comment later. But that's something that we wanted to put on the record, our objection to the three-quarters turn line.
Mayor and councilmembers, I did have discussions yesterday with the attorney for Presbyterian Homes about those two issues. And we've come up with, I think, some potential solutions to address those in the development agreement about when that three-quarter turn is necess, if and when that three-quarter turn is necessary, and also how to deal with access to the, for the Fountain Place development, given the vacation of parts of Castlemore Drive. So I think we've agreed in principle on perhaps how to handle those things, so, in the development agreement.
With that being said, I don't know if I want to open up for questions now or continue the, with the other parts.
What's the pleasure of the council? Do you want the report to keep going? Proceed. Sure.
So with that, we'll turn it over to the apartments.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, councilmembers. My name is Bjorn Struman, developer with Timberland Partners. On behalf of myself and my colleague Ryan Seiler, who apologized that he could not be here tonight, he's, interestingly enough, out of town in Denver. Luckily, I think. But he looks forward to coming back later this summer with our formal application for specifically the apartment project. So tonight, we'll give you a brief introduction of what we're envisioning for the apartment parcel. And we'll hear from our project architect, Evan Jacobson, as well. So Timberland Partners is planning a approximately 246-unit apartment project as part of the Castle Ridge development. The 246 will be a mixed-income apartment community with a building that is seven stories long Prairie Center Drive, stepping down five stories to, as it moves towards Purgatory Creek. We're given the opportunity to look at the site. It was something we were really excited about, given our experience, our past experience over the last 18 months, working with the city on our elevated southwest station project. And then also to have another opportunity to work with a unique redevelopment site on a project that is going to be community-enhancing, as well as provide high-quality mixed-income housing that is needed within the community, was something that was really intriguing to us. As many of you know, Timberland Partners is a long-term owner and operator of our real estate properties. So when we can't, when it comes to looking at a project like Paravel, which is what we are going to, we would like to call this project, we're looking at something that is unique, distinctive, yet complementing the projects within not only the city of Eden Prairie, but also in our immediate area within the Castle Ridge redevelopment. As I mentioned, with me tonight is Evan Jacobson, principal with Tushy Montgomery Architects, who'll walk through the plan that we presented to planning commission in April, and then discuss, briefly discuss some of the updates that you'll see when we bring the full vision of Paravel in front of the staff, planning commission, and ultimately city council here later this summer.
Thank you, Bjorn. Good evening, Mayor Case, councilmembers. Evan Jacobson, Tushy Montgomery Architects, as Bjorn mentioned, I just want to kind of give you a high-level overview of the project, the 246-unit project that Timberland is proposing for the Outlet A associated with the full-site redevelopment PUD. So this, the plan on the screen right now is the previous plan that we submitted to staff and reviewed with the, the planning commission the first time we introduced the project with the Pres Homes team. So in high-level overview, the plan that you'll review later tonight is more or less the same. 246-unit building. It's a U-shape faced towards the Purgatory Creek Trail System and Creek Lake to the west, with a pretty intense courtyard, terrace courtyard that kind of transitions from the public realm near the wetland on the west side of the site to kind of the private side, as you can kind of see the, the pool terrace on the top side of the courtyard. So obviously, we've been working with city staff, introduced the project to the planning commission, have met with, met council, and just fielded a lot of comments throughout the process. Some of the consistent comments we've heard are related to parking, our quantity of parking and both the orientation and layout. Some roof-level design, maybe some opportunities to integrate more to the local context and the, and the projects that Pres Homes is presenting. And then a lot about outdoor usable group open space and activating the, the green space that we have left in the, in our project. So one of the things that's interesting to note is the wetland on the west side of the site that you see is a portion of our site, so that is our property. However, there's a wetland easement on it, so we really can't do anything on that property. We can't plant on it. We can't build on it. It's a part of our site area. It's a part of our site area, but really, it's kind of grandfathered in with the way that it is right now. So it's kind of a constraint that we have to work around when we're laying out the configuration of the building and looking towards all of those group usable, open, outdoor space quantities and figures that we're dealing with on a, on a day-to-day basis with city staff and internally as we're working through the project. So a couple big changes from this plan, from the first slide that we showed, is kind of starting at the, the connector you can see on the, the lower right of the screen, that's kind of our drop-off, again, it's kind of a bypass where envisioned as the primary entrance of the building, but also kind of a, a temporary loading, its drop-offs, its pickups, its Ubers, its deliveries, that sort of thing, maybe a mail carrier dropping the mail into the lobby there. In the previous iteration, we also had four or five visitor parking spots there angled, which we got some, you know, feedback that those might not be appropriate in that location. So we actually, we eliminated all of those temporary visitor parkings and kind of pulled them around. You can kind of see right at the bottom, right above the center of the page there, there's kind of a, a blue area, and that's kind of where our visitor parking, the 15-minute future resident parking is, and then we kind of have some architectural elements that lead them from that visitor parking to the front door. It's not quite as convenient as those initial visitor parking spots that we proposed, but probably a, a better solution for all parties. Moving, continuing kind of southwest of the site, the first plan that we looked at had parallel parking on the, the kind of southern road between our property and Pres Homes, and it was inconsistent with what Pres Homes was proposing on their side of the street. So one of the things that we here, heard through the process is just trying to make a consistent development between all three development parcels, and so this was another effort just to, to reconfigure that parking. We actually had to push the whole south side of the building up a little bit, lost a little bit of square footage from the building, but ultimately picked up some parking there, which was another comment we heard. So all in all, we think it was a good revision to the project, to add parking, and then create a more consistent language throughout the development and the roads throughout the project. So kind of continuing west, on the first slide, the south building had kind of a dogleg that actually kicked north. A comment that we had heard when we went to met council was, you know, maybe we might look at opportunities to shift that mass, that five-story mass, over what we were proposing as the two, two-story common space right above that, that drop-off and bypass lane. The comment there was just kind of trying to, to maintain a, a nice quality and airy feel of the courtyard, that interior courtyard, and, and maintain the most amount of the units on the interior courtyard to, to maintain that strong view corridor out to Purgatory Creek. Continuing up, you can kind of see a pretty significant deviation between the original kind of drive-in parking lot in the center of the courtyard. Again, it was, functionally, it worked pretty well for us, it got our, our residents and our drop-offs and our, our visitor parking closer to kind of that gray two-story common space where a lot of the activity happens and people come in and out of the building. But it also kind of maybe decreased the quality of that courtyard by introducing more impervious area and, and chopping up some of the green space that we have available in there. As I noted, again, that wetland on the, on the west side of the site is part of our area of the site, but unfortunately, we just really can't develop it, so the free area that we do have is very precious. So the reconfiguration of that parking, pushing that parking closer to the existing infrastructure in the street, helped us to maintain a more contiguous green space and the ability to program that with higher-quality amenities, dog runs, active lawns for frisbee and, you know, tossing a baseball or football, community gardens, et cetera. So in general, those are the kind of high-level revisions that we've made to the site since we presented it last, and kind of taking the feedback from planning commission and met council, and city staff, of course. This next slide specifically just addresses where we're at with parking today. When we came in originally, we were at 324 spots, we heard that was probably too low, it was a 1.32 ratio for parking spots to units. You know, obviously, the developers kind of have an understanding of what they need and what they want from previous projects and other, you know, properties they have throughout the nation. I think Timberland owns something like 16,000 units throughout the nation, so they're pretty experienced developer and have a, a very solid understanding of the demand that they expect in this area. So per the kind of advice and the comments we heard, we did add about 30% more parking. You can kind of see in red the diagram there, again, along that, the surface parking lot or the, the road corridor between the, the Eden Prairie or the Timberland Project and the Pres Homes Project, the revision of turning those from parallel to 90-degree parking picked us up a couple there, we lost a couple in the courtyard, and we picked up a bunch by basically stacking two levels of additional underground parking in the kind of red inside the courtyard. So again, it's, it's additional structured area, it's completely underground, green roofs and landscaping, we kind of incorporated it into the terrace design of the landscaping to really serve as an amenity to the project. But, you know, did go through that effort of adding that, you know, that buildable square footage to the project to try to, to help come to a middle ground with the, the parking requirement. So added about 100 stalls, bumped us up to about 1.73, which is nearing the, the two-to-one mark per the unit, so feel pretty comfortable about that, and I, again, I mean, I would defer to Timberland for their exact expected demand, but I think at this point, we all feel very comfortable with this number. This diagram, again, previous plan, you can kind of see the, the south building has that kick-up to the north and the, the impervious area, that parking lot, kind of chopping up that teal area on our interior courtyard, and then compare that to kind of what we have now, and just kind of a bigger mass there, again, allowing us more opportunity to thoughtfully program that area and create higher-quality green spaces within the project, again, using that, that kind of constrained area we have with the wetland. So switching a little bit to the exteriors, we heard some comments, just, you know, this is the original kind of high-level schematic design that we presented to the planning commission and initially presented to city staff. We heard some comments about, you know, maybe that roof line's a little too continuous, too monolithic, especially when you compare it to the, you know, the nice aesthetic that John and his team have on the Pres Homes site with kind of the undulating roof lines and our, you know, kind of more significant building articulation. So with that feedback, we went back and looked at some of those, those roof lines and the articulation, looked at Pres Homes project quite a bit, and developed it to kind of where we're at today, which is what's on the screen and kind of these conceptual renderings, you know, the white material being kind of a very strong cast stone Asher block pattern that kind of anchors the strong corners of this building with some, you know, accent roof elements that pop up over them and, and kind of hold those corners as it trumps around the building. The beige is kind of hard to see in this rendering, but that would all be just a standard masonry brick veneer with the darker accents being a mix of, of metal panel and potentially fiber cement siding on the kind of top high levels of the building. Again, just kind of, these are more conceptual, three-dimensional images of the project, really kind of represent kind of how that courtyard works, they're a little bit small on the screen, but, you know, that lower-left image, you know, you can kind of see how eliminating that, that wing that we had previously on the south building really helps open up that courtyard and create a nice open and airy volume that provides the residents with a nice view over Purgatory Creek and that kind of terrace green space in the, in the courtyard of the building. So with that, again, that's the high-level overview. We're working with staff on a resubmital for our formal planning commission submittal, so we're looking forward to, you know, continuing to tweak those details for coordination with, with city staff and bringing it forward, forward to planning commission and the city council ultimately in the next several months.
Mr. Gettle, maybe just a generic question for you, what exactly we'll be approving tonight, because we're going to improve in concept, but also the degree that anything could change, that our opinions could change, or your, the developer comes in with a, you know, how, how different could that plan be after we make this approval in concept tonight?
So I, I think anything could change in any way, shape, or form between now and when you're actually approving an ordinance for a planned unit development, but I think the idea of approving a concept review allows them, as they put their plans together, to fit what city councils' desires and recommendations are. So, I mean, legally, it, it could change, absolutely. I don't think the, the concept review, I'm not sure what legally they're bound to with the concept review, but I think it allows them to put together their planned submittal that might fit with what the concept at a high level you've heard from the apartment piece, you're going to hear from the commercial piece, what, what kind of direction and feedback they're given.
Okay. That's helpful. Council, before, we're going to move on to the third report momentarily, so if you had specific questions, maybe save them, but any process questions in the moment, or should we proceed to the, to the commercial site? So, thank you.
Great. Honored to support the team to present their portion of the project.
Can you hold it, or, or, I mean, is it something related to process? Go ahead, I mean, or does it fit? It's up to you.
Okay. So I just want to mention that Presbyterian Home is a customer of mine. I have a software company called SMI Force, we do data analytics, and we provide cybersecurity tools to Presbyterian Homes. We have nothing to do with the building, we have nothing to do with the housing, it's all about software, and so because of that, I just want to, council members and audience to know that, and what is the process, I'm not sure exactly the process.
You'll be recusing yourself from the vote, then, I assume, yeah?
Yes.
Is it appropriate that he would participate in conversation and discussion and questions? I didn't mean to stump anybody.
No. I think I would recommend if he's abstaining from the vote, to also abstain from discussions about the topic.
Sounds good. Thanks for your advice. Thank you.
Thanks.
Thanks, House Member Ryan. All right. Up third, take it away.
Good evening, everybody. Drew Johnson with Opodin Investment Company. We're a metro-based developer focusing mainly on commercial and retail, some mixed use and vertically-integrated development. We, most recently in Eden Prairie, we worked on the tenant purchase and acquisition as their corporate real estate firm, and Abra, I believe, and so a good gamut here. So my presentation, I think, will be a little bit different in that we have multiple kind of puzzles to, pieces of the puzzle to solve for on the seven-acre commercial piece. You know, we're not one group renting apartments that we have leases to sign downstream with multiple end-users. Our team put together a very detailed discussion on the commercial part, including a, a lot of detailed points of some of the strengths of the 2008 plan, some of the gray areas or weaknesses, including some of the fatal flaws. So unless you guys have questions on those, I don't want to spend a ton of time on those, but our goal, like Timberland, is to be back in front of you in 60 to 90 days with a full submittal, with as much of our project as users we can find. We see our project being more phased due to the delivery nature, as you saw from the phasing diagram, that we're two years away from receiving our land from Presbyterian Homes, and that can have some market realities on, you know, what end-users we, we know. But our strategy is to create a place that people want to visit, shop, dine, play, and socialize in, and especially what a lot of our narrative focused on, within the site forces and the context of where the site is situated, and by that, and we think it's a very important driver of how the site's going to be laid out, the users we can expect is, the commercial component is benefiting from the great regional trade area that surrounds the mall, and all of the daytime net inbound visitors, daytime population that service this area, that why we want customers and users from the surrounding development, all of our retail studies, in actuality, you know, they would make up a very, you know, de minimis amount of the overall sales that any of these end, you know, commercial retailers will, will do. So from the 2008 plan that had 57,000 feet of retail, in addition to 100 apartment units on that seven-acre piece, we propose to right-size the amount of retail, design it for the market demand, recognize the majority of the site visits, especially as you get further away, closer to the Flying Cloud Prairie Center intersection, are going to be from customers visiting the regional trade area, people working at all of the big employers around the trade area. We want to design a central plaza that's centrally located off of the anchor, create an outdoor pocket park that has year-round amenities, that serves as an overall project and community focal point. And after we build it, we don't just want to leave it there, but we want to have a strong program management, different ways the pocket park can provide active programming to kind of serve as a unification between the commercial senior and then market rate spot. For pedestrian connections, we want to create safe and interesting connections within the site and to the other surrounding pedestrian and bike pathways. Taken from a cue from the original 2008-approved plan, we want strong visual connections from Flying Cloud and Prairie Center, we want porosity into the site, so auto-based customers can see what's behind it. We don't want any ramparts, any walls, or the site to feel closed off, and that was a, I think, a well-done and a strong part of the first 2008 submittal. For our non-anchor uses, we think multi-tenant retail, small shop, freestanding bank, coffee, potentially daycare, quick-serve restaurants, fast-food restaurants with drive, with drive-throughs, and then make sure the site would support grocery, the hotel, and then a note about medical offices, and I'll, I'll get to a point as there as well. But overall, we want it to be a marquee project that really functions as a gateway as you're heading up towards the regional mall trade area. So from that, and I think this segues well from the discussion of the resolution that's in front of you, our outlot has 10 resolutions that were passed, or that were suggested to be adopted tonight, and I want to talk in detail about four of those resolutions, and I'm going to see if our presentation is... Okay. So the first item, number two on the resolutions, and this came from feedback from the planning commission, limit the number of drive-through uses to two, which, which we understand that feedback, and then locate those on the northern portion of the project area, so that would be closer to the apartment and the Pres Homes. And I think on closer inspection of this idea, I think that would negate or be in conflict with a lot of the other design principles we're trying to achieve here. The pedestrian connections, the, the safe, the street activity, the, the connections to the surrounding, the trail around the park, and where the people are actually coming from, and I think users in that area would be more appropriate to have non-drive-through uses, and then you would focus the drive-through uses on the hard corner, because that's surrounded by barriers to pedestrians, which we believe are Flying Cloud and Prairie Center. I mean, through that intersection, there's over 50,000 cars a day, and that's, if you include the turn lanes, you know, there's over eight lanes of traffic for someone to cross to end up there, and there's not a lot of direct residential that I'd say is in kind of the studied walk shed of who would, you know, shop by foot. So, and again, and I don't know, given that this is concept plans, how these recommendations would, would shake out or these resolutions, but I think not being limited to where we put, put the drive-throughs helps us with off-peak parking demand and a lot of these reasons I mentioned. Number six, provide pedestrian connections throughout the entire project area for continuous pedestrian path and minimize pedestrian vehicle conflicts. We are 100% in agreement to adopt design standards and best practices to try to minimize pedestrian and car conflicts. In fact, on this site, I think the, you know, the majority of pedestrians will be people that drove there and that are getting out of their car and want to safely get to the storefronts and the activity, but we want to make sure that that isn't construed as adding frontage roads or kind of loops within loops to, because I think- of loops within loops to, because I think that's inefficient use of land, that there are going to be some circulation around buildings. And I think done right with crosswalks, bumped out, different materials on paving, speed bumps, just all kinds of strategies to calm and slow that traffic down, that we, we don't want to make sure that that's, you know, confused as that this, there's going to be a, some sort of trail that would replace the trails on the exterior of the site, interior of the site, which, you know, to get cars and trucks, delivery, garbage, you know, you'd need a frontage road type condition. Number eight, provide for a mix of uses. One of the items to talk about is medical office. We've had a medical office broker working for about eight months on this site. And what we've found out from the market, and we're actually a little surprised on this, is that there's more tire kickers out there than their actual users ready to, you know, sign leases today. And the footprints of these groups are in 30,000, 40,000, 50,000-foot buildings. And I think this site parked at medical office, the correct medical office, parking ratios seven to one, eight to one. You know, we, we would end up with a huge parking lot in one building in the middle. And we think out of the desires to create street activity, placemaking, that medical office is probably the sleepiest and the, and the most opposite of those desires to create. You know, it's not to say it's not an appropriate use for the overall area, but in terms of wanting people to linger, designed, you know, medical office is probably the sleepiest of all of those. The last one, number nine, traffic circulation, delivery areas should be designed in such a way that provides for direct and intuitive routes to facilitate movement and safety. So we, we agree with that as well. But one important point that we want to make, and maybe you guys can see this better in your monitor in front of you, that I think was a fatal flaw of the first design, is there was no circulation around the buildings for cars. And this drive-through is what we call in the industry a hairpin drive-through. So, all of the stacking from this drive-through queues into the main connector, the site circulation. And without having accessibility on at least three sides to four sides of these commercial buildings, and again, I, I expect these commercial buildings to do a very high volume just to what a great trade area there is and how much demand is, that that means every single garbage truck, every single delivery truck stops in the front of all of the stores. And all the deliveries come in and out of the front door, and all the trash comes in and out of the front door. So, and, you know, in this case, they had spent so much on, you know, plazas and other components, you know, next to the busy streets, that I think, you know, actually having trash collection, deliveries, employees coming in and out of rear service areas does more for pedestrian connections, intuitive vehicle flow design than, you know, than not having any circulation around buildings. In, in this particular area, that's going to be, you know, more regional in nature. So I know that was a very granular and deep dive into some of the issues that we've been, you know, at the drawing board for, you know, for months. But I think, and again, I don't know if there is an action relative to the resolution, but I think when we bring our final plan forward, we'll be, you know, touching on some of those themes that we discussed here on design.
So Mr. Getchel.
Mm-hmm.
Let me kind of rephrase where I was going before.
Sure.
How, how much, speaking of the word granular, what kind of feedback is expected from us tonight in terms of a concept review? Things like, are we comfortable with drive-throughs? Are we comfortable with five dri... You know, I don't know how granular, and if so, must can change. I'm, I guess I'm a little bit confused what our role is this evening.
Sure. So maybe going through, I think the document that was provided that Mr. Johnson's going through, that there are 10 comments in addition to the proposal that came out of Staff and Planning Commission meeting. And some of those comments are, you know, general concepts that don't, wouldn't have, that would have future granular answers, such as have pedestrian access, create green areas, have activated spaces, have public plazas. That's just kind of a general feature. And I think they agree on, on quite a few of those. I think, and I want to clarify this, that comment two is limit the number of drive-throughs to two and locate those on the northern portion. Mr. Johnson has a concern with the northern portion. I don't know if our staff has had a chance to comment on that. We can comment on that now if our city planner has a comment. But Mr. Johnson, are you saying that you're comfortable with the two?
I think market demand would produce more. I think we can do a project if that is the direction with two. I think there can be different types of drive-throughs, like a bank drive-up versus a, you know, high-volume, quick-serve restaurant, you know, 12 people getting, you know, coffee in the morning type of drive-through versus ATM. But, yeah, it's, you're exactly right, that the, the northern portion is, I think, is nothing that any of us wants in the, in this component, or at least to be bound by these resolutions now.
Okay. So then I think we can comment on that, but I think there's some points there. And then the other piece on number eight is those mix of uses. Those are examples of the such-as. So the idea with that is, this is a town center area, this is a premier development location, there are many, many new people that are going to be moving in here. So the idea is, there's a proposal out of Planning Commission talking about the type of uses that aren't fast-food restaurant drive-throughs. So your point on medical use, it doesn't say we'll have medical use, it's medical office, retail, grocery, sit-down restaurant. So I think, Mayor, to your point, he, Mr. Johnson could say, well, medical office is kind of sleepy, doesn't work. I think that still fits within that comment. But what you are seeing tonight is a request for like a limit on two drive-throughs, but maybe there's flexibility on the type of drive-through or the northern or southern portion. So if there are comments that the council has that would be helpful, and I think our city attorney wants to speak as well.
I just wanted to make a general comment about the PUD concept review ordinance. There's really nothing binding here tonight. I mean, the ordinance allows the council to make whatever comments and recommendations you deem appropriate. It doesn't bind you to approve anything in the future. It doesn't bind the developer to include those in when they finally make a final submittal. It's just for the purposes of feasibility and, you know, kind of moving things forward at an early stage rather than coming to roadblocks later on big issues that could have been discussed earlier. So you do have quite a lot of flexibility on what you do tonight, and nothing you say or the comments you make are going to bind you to any future decision.
It, and, and other council members weigh in here. It just feels a little bit like historically, this kind of granular decision-making gets vetted out by staff, and then it comes to us as a project that has some components that staff had a sense on where we stand on. You know, we, obviously, this is a cool corner of, of our market center area down there. It's, it would be, you know, obviously, I think we'd all want it to be a beautiful site. I, I guess, out of context, I don't have a sense tonight on two drive-throughs. Should they be on this side? I mean, to your point of, of different, we're serving different masters. We, we want walkability, we want trail systems in there. Oh, and by the way, some cars need to have access, you know. So to your point, probably not have the drive-throughs on the north side. But again, I trust our staff to be able to, to figure that out. And I don't know that you need, I don't know, maybe you do, a direction from us this evening, but I don't know that I, I can give that kind. And, and then to put, wrap this all in the whole concept review, but oh, by the way, we're looking mainly at this center section, which is integrated to the other two, but to what extent? I mean, it just, it's a little, this is a little bit atypical this evening than what I can recall in my past. And so I think that's the discomfort I'm feeling.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes. And any council members can weigh in on, maybe on that issue. And if we want to get deeper into the questions of the project itself, we can do that in a few moments too. But Councilmember Nelson.
Well, I've got a couple of comments for this last one. But I think we're going to have to take these one by one and at some point a public hearing, certainly on the Presbyterian Homes, which we are doing some final decisions on. But I've got a couple of comments that I would like that aren't totally reached in the staff comments about this last one. One, we've learned that senior living spaces need to be, have some connection to the rest of the community. This is a great place to do it, but it does mean that you are going to have to have more pedestrian into this than you might have in some other section. It can't be just all cars going around. You are going to have to need to have pedestrians, both from the Presbyterian Homes and from the other apartment complex, but definitely some that come across from the Presbyterian Homes so people can get by foot. Also, I do not believe there should be any drive-throughs coming in off Prairie Center Drive or Flying Cloud Drive. This is a very busy corner. And so those aren't areas you can have at least direct access to, and they have to be interior drive-throughs.
Yeah. And we, we agree with that.
Yeah. Then again, like a lot of the areas, especially the newer ones around here, we are requesting, you know, flowers and benches and possibly some fountains if it works in. But things that make this a place where people want to go, go spend time, perhaps spend money, or do their banking, something that's going to make this a little more unusual than just a place with a lot of drive-throughs and a few places to park, and nobody can get around much anyway, so nobody walks around. I'm not interested in that. I want something a little special. And, and I think it could be very profitable for you to have a time, place where people want to come and spend time and spend money. But it is going to mean you're going to have to think out of the box from what you might think of in another site, in my opinion. But it has a lot of potential for you.
Thank you. And to that, and, and we agree, and, yeah, we want, I think, in that our overall charter of our strategy, create a place that people want to visit, shop, dine, you know, and stay and socialize, that integrates is... A member of our team could not be here tonight. His name is Max Musicant, and I think he's been a consultant or given recommendations to the city before. But he specializes in pedestrian connections, linkages, and plaza programming. And he's, he's on our team at, you know, a cue from staff, which I think was a great, great idea since he's been in front of the city before to help, you know, design that, that component of, of what you just mentioned.
It might actually be a little more like a downtown place than a suburban place in some respects, having pedestrian access, access to apartments and where people are living, plus access to a very big mall area. It's, it does have a little different profile and need, and I sort of expect it to meet that.
Any other council members?
I guess I would just say that I think, I kind of agree with what you were, I think the, the nature of what you were stating. And that is, I feel like it's a little bit hard for us, and it may be a little premature for us to say, two drive-throughs versus three drive-throughs, you know. I, I just don't, I think we're going to have to see what the overall plan is, what the nature of the drive-throughs are, you know, what, how much, how much pedestrian access is going to be tied into it. And I think, you know, we're going to have to rely on staff to make good recommendations, work with you guys on the development, and come up with a good plan. Seems like we have very good experience with that happening in the past on projects. And so I trust our staff to work, work diligently with you guys and coming up with a, with a nice, a nice proposal to us. And I think then we're going to have to look at it and evaluate it based on the, on the merits of the design. And I, I just don't feel like it's appropriate for us to come in right now and say, we want only two drive-throughs, or we want only three drive-throughs, or, you know. I think it's just too hard to do that.
I'm sorry.
No, it's okay. Well, just, I'll let you speak just a second. I, I agree completely. And I, I wonder, the staff has to do the heavy lifting, so I almost wonder if they need right now, is there any clarity that our staff needs out of us? And if they feel they know what our thinking is pretty much, then I say, pass them the ball and let them take it. And then tonight, we'll, again, look at this concept review. Are we okay in general with the commercial area? Yes. Are we okay with the market-based apartments? Yes. Or now let's look at the press homes? And then we're going to approve that tonight. I mean, am I...
You're, you're correct. What, what, what Mayor Case, Councilmember Ahon, Councilmember Nelson have done is exactly what the expectation is. The feedback of what has been presented to you this evening without a detailed proposal. This is what we're looking for.
Sorry, Mr. Johnson.
Thank you.
Yes.
Yeah. And I was gonna, if, if there is anything that I, that we wanted to get across to inform the expectation of what our submittal in 90 days would be, would be this idea of site forces, is that, that there are very severe pedestrian barriers on certain sides of this site. It serves as both a, you know, connection to residential, but also as a part of a regional trade area. And, and that would influence the, that, as I think you put it well, that we have many masters to try to
We understand the complexities, and thank you for, yeah. We'll certainly take that into consideration. It's very difficult. But our staff understands that as well, so. All right. Councilmember Freiberg.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to say something that while we may sound a little vague about this, I want to encourage you, this is an exciting, a very exciting project, the way I'm looking at it. Want to piggyback what Councilmember Nelson said, because I, I concur for 100%, that we have an opportunity, we have shields coming in, we have, you know, light rail coming in. And if you look at where this property sits right now, we have an opportunity of some means of grabbing back a downtown feel with connectivity. Okay? And so, on a conceptual basis, I want to encourage you, this is a real exciting project, and I, I got total faith that things can be worked out with staff and the developers, you know, on it. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right.
Thank you.
I think we are set to open up to the public hearing. Before I just do that, Mr. Getchel, could you review for me which bullet point specifically is outside just the concept review? In other words, I'm looking through, and they
Yeah, right.
They each have something to do with the concept review, but I'm missing the press homes specificity.
So, correct, correct, Mayor. So first, you have the public hearing, then the first action is adopting the resolution for the concept review on the 19.75 acres. Then the, the next items are related specifically to Presbyterian Homes, and that's the first reading of an ordinance on the, well, that's also with the district review, but the zoning district change on the 1.33 acres, and then approving the plat. And so that does, those items include the specificity with the press homes within all four of those motions, or five of those motions.
All right. It just was read a little bit differently this evening, to me. This is a public hearing. So anyone in the audience that would like to address us on this, either concept review in totality or specifically the press homes project? Yes, please come forward, state your name and address.
Good evening, council. My name is Greg Brenney. You want my address?
Yes, please.
6521 Navajo Trail, Edina, Minnesota. But I'm here to represent Sun Life Assurance Company of Canada in this matter, and they are the owner of Fountain Place Shopping Center, which is immediately adjacent to the south of the project. It's the Michaels and the Home Goods Development. And generally, Sun Life is supportive of this redevelopment and wants to cooperate in it. But it has a couple of concerns, and I just wanted to make sure that the council was aware of those concerns. Specifically, and most importantly, it's concerned about continuing the access to Prairie Center Drive and to Columbine. It's our understanding that's proposed that Castlemore Drive is going to be vacated in this process, and the access is going to technically be lost, or the, or the public street access is going to technically be, be lost and be replaced with some sort of private easement agreement. So we want to make sure that continues, that we have that access, we have recorded access to both Prairie Center Drive and Columbine. to both Prairie Center Drive and Columbine. And we want to make sure the Columbine access continues to allow truck access, because that's our current truck route for our store, which includes tractor-trailer trucks, and that would be the southerly part of this redevelopment and our northerly boundary. So we would prefer that this access be public, but that ship may have already sailed in this process. So we are willing to accept a private type arrangement, as long as it's an acceptable agreement between the parties it's entered into. And an acceptable agreement will take a little bit of work, but we just want to make sure there's maintenance, construction, et cetera, probably things aligned with what the city wants in that agreement. We also want assurances that there's no costs being assessed to us from this redevelopment. We, if anything, are giving up something in this development with the access to Castlemore and don't necessarily feel we should participate in any costs of this project, and also don't want to have any required physical changes to our property in this process, if at all possible. And then kind of final and afterthought, just wanted to put on the record, it really would be nice if we could get those trees cut down sooner rather than later, and the grass cut on that corner of Prairie Center Drive and, what is it?
Long.
Well, down the corner of Prairie Center, and I forget the other access. But anyways, thank you for your consideration, and that's it. Any questions?
Only, well, I'll just, I want to clarify to make sure your concerns are at least getting met offline, but is there anyone from staff tonight that can at least assure the council? Well, here's my thought, though, before we go through 15 minutes of this. Can you assure the council that nothing you heard is out of the ordinary, and then can you address and meet with, I forget your name, offline?
Greg Brenney.
Greg. Robert?
Mayor Case, council members, so I wrote down a number of items here. There will be no assessments to the Fountain Place property owners as a result of this project. Access to Castlemore is through Outlet C, something we have been discussing as part of the development agreement, that there would be cross-access easements that would allow Fountain Place to continue to use that roadway. Fountain Place would still have access to Columbine Road and to Prairie Center Drive. It'd be through alternate means that exist today, because those roads are going away, but there would still be access to Prairie Center Drive at Columbine, which is a traffic signal, and also at Fountain Place and Flying Cloud Drive, which is also a traffic signal. So access will be maintained to the property. I don't see any changes necessary to the Fountain Place property. Perhaps at the tie-in with the current driveway, where the driveway from Fountain Place goes into Castlemore, there might be some minor disruptions for construction of the new road and tie-in points, but there would be no changes needed to the property itself at Fountain Place.
The truck delivery access?
Yep, truck delivery. There would be no issues with having truck traffic on Columbine Road. It is classified as a truck route, so that would not be an issue either. Cut trees, I can't really speak.
So you could assure us tonight that all the concerns you heard can be met, and are you comfortable if staff meets with, you continue to meet outside of this meeting then?
Yeah, that's fine. I just would ask, I guess, staff, if possible, has it, is it still possible to have Columbine be a publicly dedicated road?
Columbine is a public roadway. It'll maintain public status. It's Castlemore Drive.
Oh, no, not Castle, I'm sorry, Castlemore Drive, my.
You know, the reason that would be difficult for us to recommend is because the nature of Castlemore is completely changing from what exists today. It essentially dead-ends at the intersection into the various properties. We looked at an option of keeping that as a public road, but we would need a cul-de-sac or a roundabout so that our plow trucks could come in and maneuver around.
Which requires land acquisition.
That takes a lot of right-of-way. That limits the ability to develop some of the projects that the applicant is wanting to do. Instead of doing that, vacating the property, it would go into private ownership, there would be cross-access agreements, so there would be no change in access status, but it would be a privately maintained road, which quite frankly, when this project is all said and done, it will feel like a private road. It won't feel like a public street. To us, that made the best sense, and that was the recommendation we had. So for us to continue to keep that in public ownership, I think would be very difficult for the Public Works Department to continue to maintain.
Okay, and just on the record, we are against a roundabout there at that point.
Okay.
That's it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else to address the council this evening on this issue? All right, seeing none, council, is there a motion?
I would move to close the public hearing and adopt a resolution for planned unit development concept review on 19.75 acres and approve the first reading of an ordinance planned unit development district review with waivers on 19.75 acres and a zoning district change from C com to RM 2.5 on 1.33 acres and RM 2.5 to C com on 2, on .13 acres, and adopt a resolution for preliminary plat of four lots into one lot and three outlots on 19.75 acres, and direct staff to repair development agreement incorporating staff and commission recommendations and council conditions.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, council, what's your pleasure here for discussion?
I have discussion questions that I've held familiar on.
Great, excellent. Councilmember Nelson.
So I think most of them go to the Castle Ridge property, because that's what we're finalizing today, and we didn't take time for questions before we went on to the next piece. I have one question, starting the original plan had an ambulance bay. Does this current plan still have an ambulance bay? We've been waiting a long time for that second ambulance bay.
Mr. Mayor, council member, no, it does not.
Where then are we looking for an ambulance bay if it hasn't been what we've been waiting for all this time?
I think the change in the project itself from '08 changed the ambulance bay issue, but I'm not, our city planner may have been a part of the, Julie Klema, part of the discussion.
Mayor, members of the commission, exactly as Mr. Getchell stated, because of the reduced nature and change in the overall plan, the ambulance bay has not been a part of the discussion as part of this project. Now, whether there's a need to look for an alternative location elsewhere as part of a different project area, you know, that's something we can continue to explore.
I am concerned, though, because we always thought it would be in the Presbyterian homes, the one that was slated there, and we have waited now for, what, 11 years? And then it's not there. So that's a big concern for me, because we've only got one ambulance bay in town at the moment, and it was determined in 2008 we needed two. How, the size of the apartments and the square footage, especially the ones for the, what did you call it here, the, just the independent residents? What are the square footage on those?
Approximately 800 feet to 1,800 feet.
Okay, so you do go into some larger two-bedrooms or maybe even three-bedroom apartments?
Yes, council members, quite a few large units.
Okay. So I, from the planning commission, it sounded like they were all the smaller ones, and this is sort of one of the premier areas for these, so I had wanted them to be similar-sized to some other places. What kind of benches do you have, you know, around your plan, places, can people walk all the way around the unit if that's all they want to do with, you know, some kinds of trails, sidewalks with benches where they can stop? Or do they actually have to go out onto their trail system? You know, we're talking about older residents, some of them in assisted, some of them still in fairly good shape, but has that been considered?
Yes, absolutely. Mr. Mayor, council member, there is a continuous loop around the senior parcel with benches spread around the site.
Well, you're adding some charging stations. Will there be the ability to add more charging stations in the future if there's more need from residents?
Yes.
Okay. Oh, also, on the independent section, will there be 36-inch doors throughout the apartments, including into bedrooms and bathrooms? I've known a number of seniors that, say, have a fall, break something, they're in a wheelchair for three, four months, can stay in their home, but not without being able to get the wheelchair into the bathroom or whatever. Has that been considered?
Yes, I believe the overwhelming majority of the doors are 6'8" by 3 feet, so 36 inches wide.
So, yeah, 36 is usually considered what's necessary for a person to get their own wheelchair through.
Each unit is ADA convertible if needed, so it's pre-planned like that.
Thank you. That's excellent planning. I, in the past, have known some people that would have been thrilled if their units had been that way.
Council, I have a couple items, too, but I want to give you all an opportunity first. Councilmember Ahlo or Freiber, would you like me to go and?
Go ahead.
Have a chance to think. So, Mr. Getchell, this gets back to the motion, not feeling like I see the components of it like I normally would see it. And just to give an example, the cash park fees, which we really haven't chatted much about, had we approved this right now, would that have automatically? Well, I don't even know how the cash park fees would have read, because I don't know what's inside the pieces of the motion, but I know the proposal here was that we might consider tonight exchanging the 1.5 million cash park fees for 19 additional affordable homes. But had we, had I not brought it up right now and we had just voted, that would not have occurred then, right? There would not have been the extra 19 homes, and this project would have been assessed, the 1.5 million, got it. So I'm not speaking in favor of it, of the exchange, but I am using it as an illustration of how difficult it's going to be to get affordable housing in this community. If you take the 1 million 507,000 and divide that by the 19 additional units, that would bring it down to the 30% AMI, that's $78,947,000 per unit. Ton of money. I mean, if you amortize out over the life of whatever, are they 20, 25-year affordable units or longer?
These are into perpetuity.
Okay, well, then if you amortize out, they were 50 years, maybe it comes out not much at all. But, but again, looking as a city, if we began to look at some subsidies, which we have done before, Elevate and others, it's not uncommon for other cities, are there better ways for us to get 19 units? Now, as a city, it's getting more and more difficult to get 30% AMI. I mean, nearly impossible sometimes. And so here's, again, I'm not proposing this, I'm uncomfortable with it, I'm just talking about it, but here's a chance to get 19 additional units. That being said, our, I talked to Mr. Lothammer this evening, and our cash park fund is getting more and more depleted. 1.5 million is a lot of money, not that we were counting on it, in a sense, this is a redevelopment project, so you could almost argue this land in some way has paid some of its cash park fees already, as opposed to just open space land. That being said, this is how we fund our park system when we get these new developments in. So 1.5 million dollars is a lot of money. I'm comfortable keeping the cash park fees and figuring, and taking the 5% affordable and figuring out, especially with our affordable task, affordable housing task force now figuring out, you know, different mechanisms down the road that we might be able to, you know, get additional affordable kinds of units. This is out of context for me at the moment. We, I might find in a year we should have jumped at this, I don't know yet. But, just throwing that out, that it was in, they had requested us, look, we look at it, and I'd be interested if you had any thoughts.
Well, I think, you know, given the amount of senior housing units that are being developed in the city, I think we're going to see, continue to see a demand for different resources from our parks systems. Like, as we've just recently done, we've added more pickleball resources for seniors, that's not only seniors, but seniors were kind of the driving force behind that. And I think we're going to continue to see that. And, you know, this, this development is adding a lot of senior, senior housing, and so I think our park system is going to need to change and develop to accommodate those residents. And so I think that 1.5 million dollars that you're referencing, I think that's going to be really necessary to help, help with our park system to really accommodate those people. And so I think I'd really like to see it stay in, in the park dedication fees as opposed to exchanging it for something else.
Now, we did, we did some exchange with Elevate, correct? With cash park fees?
We actually, in that agreement, we are getting our cash park fees, but it's like a staged deferment, but we didn't give up cash park fees for affordable, affordable units. Maybe just to add, Mayor, as well, you touched on two things. One is the, the task force discussions. We've had many of these projects coming before you with many different affordable components. These have affordable components, and that's appreciated, and I think the staff stance was, if you, if you want to do more than the 5%, that would be great if you're able to do that, but we still would like our park dedication fees as well. That's, that's our current position.
No, I'm comfortable with that. I just wanted to say that, you know, with everything that we're looking at with affordable housing here was a possibility, and again, it just illustrates, I think, the complexity of what we're going to be facing this year, but.
Right, plus I think at 30% AMI, I mean, that's a pretty, that's a pretty nice affordability concept, where you're not always going to get that.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, and, and, just, council member, if I could just do a quick plug, one of the reasons behind the idea, and we don't disagree with the position, we understand it, one of the reasons for the thought process behind this is that if you add up the entire development site, it'll actually generate close to $3 million in park dedication fees. And so we're looking at, obviously, we understand that there needs to be funding that goes into the, into the kitty, if you will, from the overall site. But as you look at what's existing currently, the 322 units, we're actually reducing the amount of impact and then actually adding more density just to our site, which then allows for that another, I think it's a million 450 or so, plus or minus for the rest of the site to add that. So we feel like this is a unique opportunity where there, frankly, there isn't a lot of opportunity cost, the, the impact of having 322 units where there's a lot of families with kids in Broadmoor, so frankly, higher utilization of the park system. That's, that's where, that was kind of our position. So again, we completely understand staff position, but that was, that was one of the trade-offs we wanted to offer to the city, that here's an opportunity for another 19 units of 30% AMI with seniors, a lot of them being care center residents, as you saw in the report. Most of these residents have less than $12,000 annual income and total assets of less than $3,000. So not only is it deeply affordable, I mean, it's less, more affordable than 30%. And so we felt, again, as part of our mission, that this was a critical ask. We respect the position of the city, but I'd be at fault if I didn't say that.
No.
Plus, it's in perpetuity, which is, which is nice, too.
Yeah, thank you. No, I read your rationale, I get that, I even spoke to it a little bit, but, but I also understand, at the end of the day, it's hard dollars, and the city needs money to function and do the things we do, but.
Understand.
But we do have an affordable housing task force, and we are going to be looking at all the possibilities out there. So I wanted to bring that conversation up right now, just to illustrate, again, that it's going to be complex as we go through the next year. I think we'll keep the cash park fees, it sounds like, though.
I assume that since we're coming back with the other apartments, you know, the non-senior apartments, that a discussion on some affordable units will be as part of that as well, am I correct?
Yes, council member Nelson, there is, that's part of their proposal.
Affordable.
So it's not the beginning or end of the affordability phase of this?
Correct. All right. Councilmember Freiber?
I just, I just like to interject something. I think as, the soonest we could get something like this to that task force, that's why we created it, it was far as to help us out. This is a good classic one right here, because you got all the complexities in the, you know, going against on it, and we do need help, you know, as far as reaching to accommodate, understanding your position, and, you know, in our situation as far as stance of the city. Flexibility, you know, I think's going to get it all done, but that task force could be a very viable tool to get this done.
Right. All right, council, any further discussion? Then I will, we have a motion in a second. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Those oppose? Passes 4, 0 with 1 abstention, recusal. All right, thank you. Everyone, welcome. Glad that you're finally here. I know that this project, I was not on the council, there were only two here back in '08 when the first project came through, but we've all followed it, so it's nice to see this coming to fruition, so welcome.
Yes, welcome. We're really excited, so.
Thanks, everyone.
All right, Fountain Place.
Yes, Mayor and Council, our second public hearing, this is an application for exterior facade improvements to the retail Fountain Place building and site improvements to the parking lot, along with landscaping on the site. The proposed improvements are compliant with the city code. There are no waivers, so because of that, this project is considered a minor amendment. So when you have a minor amendment, it still needs to come to the city council for PUD amendment approval, but it did not need to go through the planning committee. Commission, as it's a pretty straightforward project. So I believe the applicant is here to provide a brief overview of their planned improvements, and then the council would hold a public hearing and adopt first reading.
Fait.
Good evening. I'm Bill Witrock with RSP Architects, 1220 Marshall Street Northeast in Minneapolis. And before we get going here, I do, we do have a short presentation, but I want to say thanks to Julie Klima and staff. We have worked with staff, and that has helped us shape our approach and how we came up with our design. So they've been very helpful. So, a bit of background that's included in your packet, Fountain Place was designed in 2003, and that was with me. I was the original design architect on this project, and I'm glad it lasted this long. Wish I could say the same thing about myself. But it was a very intense project, and you can see that we intentionally designed this project to have smaller parking spaces, well landscaped edges, and sidewalk connections through as much as we could. So we're starting from that point of view. In 2016, Sport Mart went vacant, and it's been vacant ever since. And our client, Sun Life, has now got a tenant on the hook, ready to sign up, and we're ready to go. So the tenant is smaller than the original space, so it needs to be subdivided. So, yes, so this is, I want to make a point of this. We just talked about the Press Home site, and we're just to the south of that. And we're, we were one of the first developments in this area, and all the landscaping has grown up and is now mature. And this is very visible from 212, and it's a, I think, held up well architecturally. There we go. Site plan, this is the areas of work that we are proposing, and this is also included in your pack. And on this plan, you'll see that we are proposing on the left-hand side, the two-tenant demising of the old Sport Mart space. The larger tenant on the far left is the one that's currently being proposed as, being close to being announced. And with that, the interior plan is requiring that we have truck dock access to both tenants. Therefore, the truck dock will be oriented to have two docks. Right now, there's a trash compactor in one of them. And then a common corridor, service corridor along the back to connect to the second tenant. The trash compactor will be relocated in the rear and will be screened with an architecturally compatible screen. It will be a screen wall that will have thin brick of the same brick that's on the building. So this will be architecturally compatible. And the entry of Sport Mart will, and the storefront will be modified, and two new entries will be located. We had to restrict the location of those entries, because the soils there are very poor. And in 2003, we constructed a grade beam across the entire storefront of Sport Mart that was held up on piers. Therefore, in order to get a more cost-effective solution, we've located the entries of both of the tenants on the far edges of that grade beam. So no additional grading or sidewalk modifications of elevation are proposed. We will be removing the sidewalk, which has been degraded, and replacing the hard surface with this project. So there's a greater detail of the plan, and you can see the, in greater detail of where the truck access is and the trash compactor, along with the relocated entries. So both entries are, will be designed, this one is showing a proposed entry. The second entry, or the second tenant has not been identified. And as part of our conversation with staff, we have also designed a contingent storefront, such that if the second tenant is not signed up in time for this year's construction season, or in a timely manner with the first tenant, there will be a contingent storefront that will be, that will be built, that will be architecturally compatible with the rest of the building. But the intent is to bring the second tenant in there when that tenant's identified. So, right now, I will say, all discussion points are leaning towards the proposed storefront to be built. But that, again, we worked with staff so that we have a contingent storefront, so that there's, when we get the first tenant in, there's not a missing tooth in the smile of the center. This is the overall elevation, and this, the upper left shows the proposed storefront. So the first storefront will be shifted over to the left, and new glass will be added on either side of the entry, and a new entry arch, holding a tenant sign, will be, will be added. The second proposed storefront will add some additional storefront windows with, and maintain a portion of the original design. The other elevations of the, of the project will only change color. They will not have any modifications to the architecture. And those will also contain tenant signs. The signs will be brought in under separate permit process. I will say that we did work with staff specifically to make sure that these elevations match the Class 1 material of 75%. I believe that's the number. And in your packet, there is a computation that shows what those percentages are, both for the proposed storefronts and for the contingent storefront. So the existing storefront, or the existing photos here, you can see that there is some nasty snow on these, so you can see how long we've been working on these. But essentially, this does represent some of the architectural elements here that will be maintained, and this will be a highly compatible architectural approach. On the site plan, I'm going to go back to this. Now, we did recognize in conversation that the city has a mission and a view to increase connectivity and pedestrian connections. In 2003, we originally designed this with a nice sidewalk, fountain amenity at a corner, and pretty good connections back in 2003. However, there are, we do have some improvements. And what we're proposing is, because of the Press Home development and existing building across Cassamore, there are some opportunities to connect to the public sidewalk that's on the perimeter, and bring two opportunities to the main building, which would be the building that we're working, we're proposing the storefronts. And then there is another opportunity to provide a connection to the small restaurant building. And both of those can connect to the perimeter sidewalks and would be accessible, and would be accessible by ADA standards. So there will be no additional steps, ramps, et cetera, required on those. In addition to that, there were two opportunities that made really good logic sense about adding landscape islands to divide parking lanes up into the required 20 spaces maximum. And those are, again, outlined in the packet, mainly on the east side. The rest of the site is substantially compliant with the current ordinance. And so our proposal is very straightforward. It's basically a tenant re-tenanting of an existing space, and some additional site improvements to just connect better.
Great. Thank you. Counsel, any questions of either the presenter or staff?
I do have a question of the presenter. I like the way the new stuff looks. I did want to make absolutely sure this will not impact the fountain and the plaza at all, correct?
We're not changing that at all.
Excellent. I think I was on the Planning Commission, and we had a long discussion about Fountain Place needing to have a fountain, yes. So it was very nicely done, and I am glad it's not impacted.
Thank you.
And we'd like, that's the fountain, it's going to be named the Kathy Nelson Fountain, so it needs to stay there, is the point. It's got to stay there. If it goes away, we're hurting.
I'll see what I can do.
Okay. Counsel members, anything else before? It is a public hearing, we'll open it up. All right, this is a public hearing. Anyone in the audience wishes to, wishing to address the council on this issue? Counsel? Seen none. Someone want to make a motion?
Yeah, I'll do that. I move to close the public hearing and approve the first reading of Plan Unit Development District review on 12.43 acres and direct staff to prepare development agreement incorporating staff recommendation and council conditions.
Second.
I was going to say, is there's a second? There's two. Good luck figuring that one out, just guess. And it's all good. So any further conversation, discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passed? It's great. Welcome the redo to the castle. Fountain Place. No, I was going to get there. I was reading, I was flipping it fast. Fountain Place, thank you so much. All right, third public hearing, City Yard Waste Drop-Off Site, Mr. Getchell.
Thank you, Mayor and Counsel. As you know, it's been in discussions at the council level for quite some time, that we've been exploring the creation, the funding, creation, construction, and operation of a city yard waste site in Eden Prairie, that would allow people to be able to bring their yard waste to. We don't have such a drop-off site in our city. People need to leave the community to do that outside of a special drop-off day. So our Public Works Director will be giving a presentation, and then asking for a site plan approval, of which the Planning Commission unanimously recommended at their meeting in, on June, well, actually, their last meeting that they had.
All right.
Very good.
Mr. Ellis.
Mayor Case and City Councilmembers, I have a quick presentation to go through. Won't be labor. I think we've talked about this a number of times. This has been a project in our 10-year capital improvement program. We've talked about it at goal setting in the past, but we're finally moving forward. We have a design that would be prepared to start construction this year, and hopefully have this open in time for next growing season. But the yardway site, located up at our Moss site, and you can see right here is a rendering of what it might look like. But to familiarize yourself with the Moss site, it's our maintenance and outdoor storage site. It's located across from Flying Cloud Airport, Executive Airport, I believe, is the business that operates on the other side of the road. It's the old drive-in site. So currently, we use that site for our salt storage. We also have a cold storage building. And then a lot of the debris that we collect throughout the year is stored up there, whether that's tree limbs from parks doing their maintenance across the city, brush clippings, things of that nature. So, again, project location, it's down in that southern portion of Eden Prairie. I'll highlight that there are some residential properties that are just to the east. They are quite a distance away. The closest is about three fifths of a mile, quarter, or half of a mile distance from the perimeter of the outdoor storage site, the future yardway site. So there are some residents that are located there. Now, I will say, when they recap the landfill, they created that large berm. So much of the site is actually hidden, because that berm separates the view from, the view shed from those residential properties onto our storage site. You can see here, this is a, it's a triangular-shaped piece of property that we own. We've got Republic Services to the south, the airport owns the property to the north, and then the state owns the landfill property. The type of materials we're looking at accepting at the site would be leaves, your spring-and-fall thatch, tree branches, logs, diseased trees that are removed, wood chips, vegetable garden waste. What we're specifically excluding would be any grass clippings, any dirt, lumber stumps, or mixed loads of those types of materials. And the reason for that is, there would be an enormous volume of grass clippings that people would want to drop here if we allowed it. And that becomes difficult to manage just from the volume of material, but it also creates an odor as it begins to compost on site. And we were sensitive to the residential neighborhood half a mile to the east, and we didn't want to create odor-type issues. These other, these other materials we would accept would not create that type of a nuisance. Hours of operation, we're looking at during the growing season, probably starting last week of April, weather permitting, we're operating through, towards the end of November. Probably a, you know, two to three days per week, Wednesday through Friday perhaps, 3:00 PM to 8:00 PM, so this would be after hours. So we're not interfering with our use of the site during the day, when we're doing large truckloads in, truckloads out. We didn't want to intermingle private traffic with our heavy equipment operational traffic. So it would be after hours, staffed from 3:00 to 8:00, and then Saturday and Sundays from 10:00 to 5:30. And those may adjust with the amount of sunlight that's available. So early season, late season, those might shrink mid-season, when you have extended daylight hours, perhaps running later into the evening. Admittance, Eden Prairie residents, you'd need to have proof of residency, a driver's license, utility bill with your name or address on it. Also, Eden Prairie businesses, show a business card with Eden Prairie dress, or a current utility bill with Eden Prairie dress on it. But we would not allow commercial haulers or commercial landscapers, even if they were an Eden Prairie business. The site is not large enough to handle commercial-type operations. So this would be purely business and residential, residents of Eden Prairie. Taking a closer look at the proposed improvements, right now, the city takes access to the site on the northern end of the property. There's currently a driveway, it's at an angle, there is no left turn lane, it's not optimal under current conditions. We would be looking to relocate a new driveway directly across from Executive Aviation, and also including left turn lanes and right turn lanes into the site. That was a requirement of Penupin County. Of course, this is their roadway, so they have jurisdiction. That is something that they wanted to see with the project. We hadn't quite budgeted for that, but I think we can still make this work. We actually have to do quite a few off-site improvements on the Flying Cloud Drive to make that new access work. But it will be safer for not only city employees, but also the public that uses the site. Also, once you get into the site, there will be gated, secured entrance. So during our working hours, we have, you know, card access to come in and out. It'd be locked during off-hours. We would have an attendant on-site, they would open it up when it was open to the public, and they would close it down at the end of the evening before they left the site. Vehicles would enter, there would be a kiosk booth where they would validate residency, inspect the load. Then people would be directed within a kind of gated area, or cordoned-off area, perhaps it's Jersey barriers, where they'd do their drop-off of the tree branches, logs. And then we're also looking at possibly having mulch on-site, so if people on their way out wanted to load it up, a trailer with some mulch, that is something we're looking at, or possibly wood chips. Again, I think we've seen that rendering, just a 3D rendering of the compost piles, the tree branch piles. And then this is that view I was talking about. So for residents that live over on Kirsten Place, that was one of the closest residents, this is kind of that 3D Google image. You really can't even see the site. I've kind of marked the top of that salt storage dome that we have, so you could see the top of that tall building, but you wouldn't be able to see the operational piles of brush or anything from that location. Here's another vantage point from a home a little bit farther down to the south. Again, you can just barely see the top of the salt storage facility. You can see our radio tower here, but outside of that, you really can't see the operations on-site. Project timeline, this was first included in the 10-year CIP back in 2018. We immediately started design late 2018. We held an open house. I think we sent out about 105 invites to people that lived around the project area. We had zero attendees. I did end up getting a phone call from a resident a few days after the fact, just curious how the meeting went. Outside of that, that was my only contact, so I don't think there was a lot of concern from the neighborhood about this being a yardway site. We've, of course, been through Planning Commission, now here tonight at City Council. If it's approved, we would look to begin construction in July, with the bid award coming at the July City Council meeting for approval. And it isn't a lot of work. I think that we could have this complete by November of 2019, with the goal of having it open to the public in 2020, April of 2020. And with that, I can answer any questions you might have.
Counsel?
Robert, a couple of questions. One is, when the, when residents drop off the materials, what would... One is, when the, when residents drop off the materials, what would, would we leave them on-site, or would they be moved somewhere else?
Yes, excellent question, Councilmember Aho. We would actually be contracting with a hauler to remove them from site. Currently, we do that now, the Parks Department and Public Works Department. We do a lot of tree trimming throughout the year, just trees in the right-of-way, trees in parks. Right now, we work with a company that comes in and grinds those up, and then they use it for fuel. They burn it and turn it into energy. I believe they do that for free, so as long as they continue to do that, that will reduce a lot of our operating costs. But now, when we start bringing in leaves, garden waste, some of those other types of materials, we would most likely, or I'm sure we'll have to pay for the disposal of that. Taking a look at a budget that we put together for this, it's about a $60,000 a year operation. The lion's share of that would be for hauling, disposing of material, and...
We also have to pay a staff member to be there.
And the rest would mostly go towards hiring seasonals just to be present on-site during operational hours.
Right, and so if you were going to provide wood chips, as you mentioned, as a possible option, then what they could do is grind up the, some of the materials that are brought on, and those would be left as wood chips for people to haul away?
Certainly, that's possible. We really modeled this very closely to what the city of Plymouth does, the size of the site, the type of materials that they allow. They even recommended hiring senior citizens. They seem to be the best employees that want to work the evening and weekend shift. But what they have found is that when they do their contract for disposal, the hauling of the leaves and garden waste, they write into that, on their backhaul, that they actually bring in a load of mulch, good mulch to leave on-site. So I thought that that's probably how we would handle it. As far as wood chips, if we want to do wood chips, it might be the existing company that does our grinding. Perhaps they could leave some. I'm not sure what that material looks like, if it's, would be suitable for use in the yard, I don't know. But it might be that we have to pay to haul in some wood chips, or it might be that we can use some of the debris that we currently have on-site. I'm not sure yet.
One last question. So would there be a cost to residents to drop off to this, or is it a, is it a no-charge operation?
We were anticipating a no-charge system. Yes.
Thank you.
One other thing I should point out, kind of in relation to what we heard this afternoon at open podium, is that this would also give us an opportunity to maybe open up for events. It might be recycling event on a weekend. So we pick a weekend during the year, and people can come in and drop off electronics. Maybe another weekend, it's large appliances. Maybe one weekend, it's metals. That might alleviate some of the pressure that we see on cleanup day. If we can maybe have special events, and then we could exclude those perhaps from cleanup day, so manage some of the volume of traffic that we're beginning to see.
Great idea.
Good idea.
Also, a member, Narayan.
Robert, thank you. Just one comment, I'm really glad to see that a building you don't see from outside just sticking up. So just a comment, it's great. One other question I had, I'm glad Councilmember Aho already asked about the cost, and so this doesn't cost anything to the residents. What about the chips that you said you may be able to provide, do they have to pay for Any size limit? One more question, I just give to you. Any size limit in how much a resident can bring on a particular day, or any other limitation to the residents?
I guess at this point in time, we weren't thinking about charging for the hauling of any wood chips. Perhaps there'd be a limit on the volume you'd be allowed to take on a weekly basis, a monthly, a annual basis. I think there's a lot of things that we're going to learn along the way. Quite frankly, in talking to Plymouth, they felt this was a very simple site to operate. There weren't a lot of conflicts, there were, you know, it was a free service that they provided, that they didn't see a lot of abuse of the system. But you never know, and I guess we'll just, we'll have to put together our operational manual before we open up, and we'll just have to continue to tweak it to see what works and what doesn't work as we go through our first year of service.
People are somewhat limited because of the size of the vehicle that they can, that they have. I mean, you know, the average resident isn't going to have a big, you know, 25-yard dump truck to be able to pull and drop stuff off with. They're going to maybe have a pickup truck, so it's not going to be that big.
Last Saturday, I did see multiple people rented U-Hauls and driving in to the waste site, so they've come up the creative way.
People will get very creative if there's a way to save some money. So, you know, I think it's just going to be some good judgment and applying some policies about what's allowed, what's not allowed. And, you know, there might be some customers that try to abuse the system, and I guess we'll just have to deal with those as they come up.
Thank you.
Counsel, this is a public hearing, but prior to doing that, any final questions? Mr. Ellis?
Oh, just one comment, that in the past, when we've had some straight-line winds or almost tornadoes where a lot of trees have gone down in people's yards, people had very much wanted a site like this. We couldn't provide it at that time, but I'm fine, really glad that we will now have something where people could deal with, you know, sort of more minor wind disasters, but still, when your tree goes down, it's a pretty big deal.
Good point. This is a public hearing. Anyone in the audience wishing to address the council? Oh, please, don't be shy.
My, Alicia.
For those listening or watching on TV or seeing this replayed later, no one's in the audience except for staff. That's why we are, at the moment, laughing. Counsel, any final comments, or do you wish to make a motion?
I would make a motion to close the public hearing and adopt a resolution for site plan review on 13.84 acres.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, passes. This is, I find, very exciting. So thank you, Mr. Ellis, for all the work you've done and your team. All right, Mr. Getcho, we have a couple fairly housekeeping, I believe, well, maybe not the next one, code amendment for solar.
Yes, there is housekeeping to it, but there's a positive benefit as well. So what we've done is we've provided clarity in our zoning code by providing definitions for solar energy systems and them being explicitly allowed on property in Eden Prairie. And so what that also does is allows us to continue to pursue and actually attain a SOUL SMART designation. There's an agency that works with municipalities across the state that provides levels of designation, and I believe one of the items that they like cities to do is be very clear in their zoning code that they support and allow, you know, roof-mounted solar systems in residential districts, commercial districts, and other districts. And so we're being very explicit by updating our code and distinctly allowing those systems, and then we'll be able to achieve a gold designation with SOUL SMART. So that is, it's a little bit of housekeeping, but I think it's also a feather in our cap.
Excellent. Counsel, I see. Councilmember Nelson, you have a question or a comment?
A comment, since I had at one point asked the city to look into making a statement that solar was allowed everywhere because some various neighborhood groups were, in one case, trying to limit what could be done. So the, but we really needed to make positive statements so people could do it. And so I'm glad we're doing it at this point, and people don't have to argue that it is or isn't allowed, or whatever else. It's a good thing for a lot of people to do if they decide to do it.
Councilmember Freiberg?
There's one counterbalance to that, though, that's probably going to come up, and that could be with, you know, covenants in the, in a PUD, because that can control pretty much everything on the outside of a house, and I'm sure that's going to come up against it.
Is there, our attorney, does this city municipal ordinance code preempt covenants or association rules?
Mayor, that is a good question. My esteemed colleague worked on this ordinance, and maybe Julie can speak to that better than I can. Mayor, members of the council, historically, when there's been a conflict between the zoning code and restrictive covenants or homeowners' association, the homeowners' association does preempt city regulations.
Interesting, okay. And I would say, anyway, most townhome-type associations, they're not allowed already to put a special deck on or to paint their houses or, they can't do that now. So the idea that they could not put solar and just, but they could probably go to their association, get some kind of a ordinance type or association rule change to let everybody. But, Councilmember Narayan?
So a clarification question. So this means I can put a solar farm on, in front of my house, back of my house yard, on roof of my house? Where the limit, or is there a limitation?
So it is defined as a permitted accessory structure, and I believe Julie can answer? We've got rules for what you can do with that, setbacks and whatnot.
Mayor, members of the council, so as Mr. Getcho said, it would be allowed as a permitted accessory use. So it would not allow a solar farm, for instance, because that is a standalone primary use. So there has to be a primary use, say, an office building or a home that already exists on the lot, and then you could install solar either as a roof structure or as a freestanding structure someplace on the property, and you would be in need of meeting setback and height restrictions that are set in the particular zoning district in which you're located.
So if that means backyard of my house, I can have panel if I need to, if I want to?
Mayor, members of the council, that is correct.
Probably not, unlike building a shed back there, or, you know, having a pavement and have a boat or something, yeah.
Whatever it is, you are allowed to do that. Thank you.
All right, any further questions? This is a public hearing. Anyone in the audience wishing to address the council on this issue? Seeing none, counsel? A motion?
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing and approve the first reading of the ordinance to amend City Code, Chapter 11, relating to solar energy systems.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right. The next one, I believe, is fairly perfunctory. Mr. Getcho?
Yes, thank you, Mayor and Council. I think this is probably the third or fourth vacation of drainage and utility easements you've seen associated with a development project that came before you. So in this case, this is the Beverly Ridge project that you've approved, and we're asking that we vacate unnecessary and unneeded drainage and utility easements associated with this new plat, and we would, you know, dedicate any new easements with the new plat.
Counsel, any questions? This is a public hearing. Anyone in the audience wishing to address the council on this issue? Counsel, motion?
I move to close the public hearing and adopt a resolution vacating drainage and utility and easement.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, payment of claims. Any items to question? Could I have a motion then to approve?
Move approval?
Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Aho?
Aye.
Councilmember Freiberg?
Aye.
Councilmember Narayan?
Aye.
Councilmember Nelson?
Aye.
Mayor Case?
Aye. All right. Appointment, students on commissions. Mr. Getcho?
Mayor and Council, as you know, we have a very active and robust student on commission program. We had our banquet last month when we recognized many of our students as juniors or seniors that had been part of our city commissions. They are active, they are involved, and we get quite a bit of participation. So you will see, tonight, we have, I think it's like 23 students that applied, and we found a space for each and every one of them in their first or second choice for commission to one of our, five of our six commissions. So their, their application process was, just this past month, appointment at this meeting, in orientation in August, and when school starts in the fall, they will take their seat with their commissions in September. So as you see, we have multiple appointments to multiple commissions, and we're, once again, just very excited to see this enthusiasm and the number of applications we keep getting.
Nice. The diversity represented in this list is amazing, and that's going to also cause us not to pronounce these names very well. My suggestion, PG, if we would start there and just head right down, and I'll just take my turn, and there's five different bullet points, so we'll end with Councilmember Freiberg. Councilmember Narayan?
I move to appoint to the Conservation Commission, Abhiram Nalamali, Kerston Homing, Mina Kim, Nele Timmerman, and Robin Gurumurti.
And I move to appoint to the Flying Cloud Airport Advisory Commission, Amag Kaliyanam, Evelyn Hemler, Spencer Ellis, and Troy Johnson.
And I move to appoint to the Heritage Preservation Commission, Aditya Nadyar, Elise Ferlato, Lily Hyland, and Maya Chavez.
I would point to the Human Rights Diversity Commission, Kapri Staidal, Najma Ali, Nicole Meyer, Stavon Bokta, and Winifred Holm D'Souza.
I move to appoint to the Parks Recreation and Natural Resources Commission, Riley Marble, Shay Jenoga, Simon Vergara, and Tanah Solanke, and Zachary Spears.
All right, is there a second?
Second.
I'm assuming no discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, welcome. We're just always excited to have the student volunteers on our commissions, and we deeply apologize for massacring some of your names. All right, reports of council members, I just had three items, and I had them fairly quickly, and I don't even need to spend time on. The first was just the dumping, I feel like we've got it covered, and I think, I just wanted to say to people listening or that might have been here in the audience that our staff is well aware. I think we've picked up from all of our residents the concerns, and we're going to definitely work hard to make it better next year. The second is just the concerns that all of us continue to be hearing, and I know this because I've chatted with you, about the abandoned houses and the houses in need of maintenance across the town, and just that idea of, are we, there are houses that have sat for a decade empty, and it's just that sense again, and I'm not, I'm so supportive of our staff, I just want to know, do we have the list, whatever that is, the list of the 50 properties that are in most really danger of falling into great disrepair, or being completely, there's two I know of right now that are completely empty for the last six, seven, eight years. I don't, I don't get it. I don't know, when residents ask me, how can that happen? I don't have a great answer. We have ordinances, we have, we have laws, we have the ability to go to court, we have the ability to find, I mean, we, let's do it, is my thought. So I'm asking with counsel approval to maybe have staff come back at our next meeting just with, yes, we do have a list, just give us the lay of land, we do have a list, we know right now about the 10 worst, and I hate to be pejorative like that, but the houses that are in the most disrepair, this is what we're doing about it, these two were already taking to court, we've contacted the bank here, we just want to know that things are happening, because it's bringing down the value of the neighborhood and those neighborhoods where these abandoned houses sit. And we got an email this week of somebody that lists out four homes that are in a great state of disrepair, and the lawns don't get mowed, and again, I know that we're on top of that, we just all, as council, want to know, yes, we're on top of that, here's what we're doing, we're moving on this. Okay, great. And then finally, just a small piece, I went to the play, the State Fair, sorry, I should have written that down, on Sunday night, up at Staring Lake Amphitheater. Amazing, it was fantastic. 310 people that night, 200 some the night before. We had five or six student-age staff up there, Eden Prairie staff, doing such a great job. But anyway, two residents that night came up and said, run, sit right here. I'm sitting in the upper part of the amphitheater. Look out at Staring Lake, what do you see? You don't see it anymore. About, just 10 years ago, you saw the beautiful lake, and the whole viewshed was there. And I'm a tree lover, so I'm not necessarily saying clear-cut at all, but they were pointing out their cottonwoods. I don't know that that's true. I thought we'd get Mr. Aho on this one, and let him go, he'll tape them and flag them for you, and maybe even recommend what to do with them. So I wondered, it's parkland, and I'm not, I know we're busy, I'm not assigning something else out there, but as we're, if there's ever that day where we've got a day open where we could take trees down, if it made sense in that viewshed, just thought I'd throw that out. That's my only council member reports for the evening. Do you want to comment maybe briefly?
Yeah, absolutely. I know exactly what you're talking about, Your Honor, the angle there, and we had, a few years ago, tried to trim up, limb up some of what was there. There may be, we don't quite hate cottonwoods yet, but ashes. And so... And so we need to look there, and then the other place is, now that, as we build the new Starling building, there's a great view sort of down the ski hill, and we'll be looking at, can we open that view shed up as well? So when you're sitting up in that meeting room or watching your kids go down the sledding hill, that there's that opportunity to.
And I know forces are conflicting, because one of the greatest parts of Starling Lake is walking that path around it and just being completely canopied with trees, and, you know, we don't want to lose that either, right? But sitting, if we could, if there's ways to do both, if there's a ways to improve the view shed, that would be great.
I think there's a balance there.
Okay, perfect. You're the guy to figure that out, I know that. All right, I believe we are at the final Director of Public Works. I think we're back to Mr. Ellis. Limited use permit for municipal entry monument sign on Highway 5. Mr. Getcho, did I just steal your thunder there? Do you need to say anything?
No, Mayor, you, we'll turn it over to Mr. Ellis for his item. Thank you.
Yes, so I'm here tonight to request permission to admit a limited use permit to the Minnesota Department of Transportation for our next city entry monument sign. A really short PowerPoint that I will go over here quickly, talk a little bit about the project. So this is a rendering of the next planned entry monument sign. This would be at the intersection of Dell Road and Highway 5. Maybe just before I dive into it, I'll do a little bit of a project summary, because we do have a couple of new council members serving now, but this was initiative that was really city council-driven, starting in 2014. I believe there was a design committee that was assembled and kind of came up with the types of materials, the look of the entry monument sign, that was back in 2015. Also, with 2015, there were several different sign locations that were presented to the city council and as identified as high priority areas. And we actually installed our first sign in 2016 at Anderson Lakes Parkway and 169. We recently finished the second sign, which is on Interstate 494 at Viking Drive. And finally, these signs, the work that's associated with the design and construction of the sign, is being funded through the economic development revenue that's generated that Dave Lindahl spoke about earlier today. So our next project location, I mentioned, is at the intersection of Dell Road and Highway 5. It would actually be on Highway 5, at the red dot that you see here, would be just past Park Dental, and I believe that there's a daycare center that is the next building, and it would be just to the east of Dell Road, so that's as you're entering into Eden Prairie. Taking a look at the entry signage locations that we have, the ones in red are the ones I highlighted, the 494 and Viking Drive, Anderson Lakes Parkway 169, and then, of course, the Dell Road and Highway 5. The stars that are in blue are future locations that have been identified, and that would be Highway 212 at Dell Road, Interstate 494 southbound at Baker Road, Baker Reservoir, and then finally, 212 southbound, that would be on the large hill as you enter into Eden Prairie. This is a photo of the first sign that we installed at Anderson Lakes Parkway. It, the theme carries through with all these signs, but it's the block wall, it's the colored, the blue-colored waves, Eden Prairie lettering that's lit up at night, and then the birds that, at this location, the, the birds were not lit up, it was just the Eden Prairie logo. When we moved on to our second sign of Viking Drive and 494, we did light up the birds, we lit up the waves, we lit up Eden Prairie, used the same style of rock wall, retaining wall. And this is a, this is a picture of that sign taken in the evening or nighttime hours that really show the, the birds, the Eden Prairie, the waves. And then again, this is the, the concept rendering of the Highway 5 Dell Road sign that would be the next, the third installment. Project timeline, if approved tonight, I would submit the LUP, the Limited Use Permit, to the Minnesota Department of Transportation for their review. Sometimes that can take several months, but I'm hoping to get something back in time for us to go, advertisement for bids in October of this year. That would allow for a bid award at the November city council meeting. Construction could begin, most likely, summer of 2020, and it will be too late in the construction season for that to begin during the winter, but we would be able to complete it by the summer of 2020. And with that, that is all the information I can present.
Thank you, and I'll open it up to council members. I just want to make a comment that, as, being part of someone that sat kind of on the outside as, as the process was played out and these different ideas were brought forward, and I know that Councilmember Aho and at the time, Councilmember Butcher-Wickstrom sat on, as council members on a larger team, and would bring these ideas back, and we all had our opinions. I mean, I'm from the East Coast, and I envisioned some red brick, you know, classic, whatever, Bostonian, something, right? We have this, this image. That being said, that lit up one up on 494. I just really get great pride when I drive that route, and, and that idea, I mean, it's lighting, it's, it's fresh, it's bright, it's dynamic, it's energetic, it's just all those positive things. And way back 20 years ago, we started talking about Eden Prairie, the, the thing that we're really needing to build as we grow from 10,000, you know, to 80, 70,000, whatever, was that sense of place, and that identity with, with, it's not just the brand itself, but that branding piece that represents place. And I feel like now that we're getting the three, and there's synergy between all of them, and I, I don't know, I want, I really want to rush to get the rest of them in, especially the one up on 494 north coming down, because that's just critical and huge, and if we got that lit-up kind of sign there so that gets you on both sides, because 270,000 cars a day or something traverse through Eden Prairie on that road, and I think this is powerful. So I'll, I'll be quiet and open it up to any other council members for comments.
Well, I'm just glad to see it coming to fruition, and, you know, we get a lot of comments on them, and some positive, some negative, but I think overall, mostly positive, and I, I think it, it's really nice, and I'm, I'm really glad to see it coming to fruition, so.
Thanks for your work on all that.
Yeah, no, it was, it was good, it was exciting.
Others? Anything?
Hearing none, I would move to adopt the resolution requesting a limited use permit for municipal entry monument sign on Highway 5 east of Dell Road.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? All right. I would, unless there's any further business to come for the council, one of our later council meetings in recent history?
Yes.
Not anything like the 90s, however, I will remind people. In fact, we had to have a motion back then where we wanted to take a break at 11 o'clock at night, just to get a break, so that was, and we had many meetings like that. Motion to adjourn.
I move to adjourn the city council meeting.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose. Meeting is adjourned. Oops, sorry, I was going to be quieter. Got to work on that.